We have like five items on the agenda. Not very lengthy. With that, would you enjoy a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Catherine, you want to call a rule?
Sure, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
Mr. Krishani?
Here.
Mr. Cosell?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
I'm here.
Mr. Mixel?
Here.
Mr. Jardina?
Here.
Mr. R2SO. Mr. Saccharon?
Here.
Okay, with that, we're all set. We can start. Uh, Dave, why don't you want to read the first under? We're going to start with number two. Late in the 1420 Lake Road is going to be first.
1420 Lake Road accessory building located 1420 Lake Road applicant Christian Bieg?
B.
Is requesting preliminary final site plan approval for construction of a 24 by 36 detached garage on a 3.56 acre parcel located in a WD waterfront development district under Dakota Town of Webster.
Okay.
So, I'm Christian Bieg, 1420 Lake Road.
Welcome back.
Yeah, right. So, actually just looking for the final approval for the garage project. And just to remind you, I was back here in February and got the preliminary approval pending zoning board and a picture. So, went into shutdown shortly thereafter, came back in June. I think it was June, May, somewhere in there. Got the zoning board approval. So, I'm here with the proposed picture building. It's just a garage, so there's not a lot of detail. Pass it.
Yeah, you can just pass it now.
Yep, yeah, cool. So, that's what we decided on the contract. That first time we settled on the contract, I didn't know exactly where we were going to go. But after setting down the contract here and playing out what this guy's gonna look like, two car garage, a door, window, and it's gonna be seated right at the end of my turnaround there.
Now, you worked everything out with the zoning board. You got 39 foot setback from the road.
Yep, we came up with a compromised location.
Yeah. That was a lot of looking around. I was in your driveway yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Yesterday morning, I pulled in there, I was looking at it. So, we took a few old pine trees down.
Yeah, working on starting to clear it out so we can get it in there.
Yeah, I don't see any issues with this. It made sense. You have windows. You talked about windows on the side of the house.
Yeah, there's actually gonna be a total of, I think, five or six windows on the building going around. And it'll be painted to match it. Like, this picture's not painted, like, our color is kind of an odd color, but it'll be painted to match the existing house.
Yeah.
Eventually.
Okay, and the use is just obviously you're using it for your own use. It's not for rent or...
Right, yep. The garage and a workshop.
It's all your stuff, right?
Is there electricity and heat out there or anything? Uh, hopefully, eventually both, because it's gonna be a woodworking workshop. So, eventually it'll have both electricity and heat.
And water?
No water. Too hard to get it out there. I love water, but...
You have water or you run well?
We're on public water.
You have water, right?
Yeah, it's just that it's kind of far away from the house, so it'd be kind of a...
Yeah. I see no problems with this at all. Anybody, any concerns?
No.
Not good to me.
Let's see, when you were in, you got preliminary approval on it and then went to the zoning board, right?
Yep.
So, he's just here for a final approval on this. Right. All right, somebody want to make a motion for it? We did that, we did preliminary approval. We already did that. He's just here for a final.
All right.
All right, I'll make a motion.
It's not public carry.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's not public carry, you have to see if anyone wants to call in.
No.
Final is not a public carry.
It's preliminary.
That's what it says on here, I'm just reading this.
Well, we got preliminary already, so...
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion, we grant an approval to Christian Bieg for 1420 Lake Road Garage is drawn at 39 foot setback that was required by the zoning board. It was approved by the zoning board. The shed being 24, garage being 24 by 36 feet is shown on his drawing. And color's gonna match the house, you're saying, right?
Yep.
Uh, it's for personal use. Okay. Anything else? I can't think of anything else.
No.
Anything else yet?
Nobody.
Huh?
Nobody. Nobody living here.
No, yeah, not used as a residence, obviously.
Yeah, no.
Used as a garage.
Okay, let's go. Commercial.
Yeah, same, I got that. This is for personal use. All right, that'd be in a motion.
Second.
Do we need a significant construction?
What's that?
Significant construction.
Yeah, yeah, we should put that in there. Significant construction to commence within one year from this date. I think he's already started.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Get it off to your graduation.
Thank you very much. We'll see, good luck.
I went to vote in that shed in the back of his house.
What's that?
I went to vote at that shed in the back of his house, the old voting booth.
Oh, and the one that's in the...
No, it took my ballot.
Those were the ones, those used to be gray. Okay, go ahead, Dave.
Okay. 478 Ridge Road accessory structure located at 478 Ridge Road applicants Brian W. Hyatt are requesting preliminary final site plan approval to demolish an existing two-car detached garage and construct a 26 by 34 accessory structure on a 3.6 acre parcel located in a R-3 single-family residential district under Dakota Town of Webster.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead, you started with us and then you went to the zoning board.
Yep, we started with you. We had approval for you for four feet, but the zoning board wouldn't take that, so we ended up at five feet, and they approved that.
So, you're five feet, what is it now?
Five feet side setback.
Okay, so you're five foot from the sideline, right?
Yes, yep.
And the total square footage was what?
And we also reduced the size of the garage because we had to shift it so much. So, it's reduced to 26 by 34 instead of 28 by 34. And it's one garage door instead of two. And there's no overhang on it anymore.
Yeah, you've got that off of there. Now, there's no, I was looking at your paperwork. You've got trusses up there, right? So, there's no attic up there like the original drawing.
Correct, correct.
I remember the first drawing, you had like a...
I have a drawing if you want to see it.
Sure, you could pass it around if you'd like.
I don't know if it shows the inside, but...
Unless it's the same one we've got, it's a sketch one here? This one? Yeah, we got that. Yeah, we got that, yep. Yep, we have that. Yeah, I was looking at the old one where it showed a little different picture. Remember, we talked about it, because it was up higher? It looked like it had a second story on it.
Yeah, yep, I had the height wrong.
Yeah.
It's 10'6".
Yep, got it. All right.
That's the older one. We had to reduce the size and take off the... Here's the new one.
All right. What are you using on it? You putting material like the house or...
Um, no, it's going to be a metal pole barn with a metal roof.
Coloring?
Um, two-tone gray.
Okay.
With white door.
So, it's not some wild color or something?
No, 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 simple. Didn't want to go with red because it fades too much.
All right. Have you spoken to any of your neighbors or anything other than the church? Was everybody...
Oh, yeah, well, I sent my letters out to everybody.
So, everybody's...
And we've also talked to the neighbors and they want to know what's taking so long.
We should turn this thing on, I guess, just in case. So, if there is anyone wishing to comment on this project at 478 Ridge Road?
Yes.
You can call in now from that. We're all set, I guess. We'll give it a minute.
You have to give them a phone number.
That's a good idea, isn't it? Where's the number here? It's 872-7011. It's a very formal organization tonight. So, you had a move, what'd you move at? Five foot from the property line, you said? Okay, I guess we're all set. No one's calling in, so we'll close it. And bring it back up to the board. Any comments on it? You guys are all okay with it?
Yep.
Okay, we have to do a seek around it actually first.
Yeah.
Derek, you want to do a seek around it?
Seeker Town of Webster Planning Board considering request by applicant Brian W. Hyatt to demolish an existing two-car detached garage and construct a 26 by 34-foot pole barn on a 0.36 acre parcel located at 478 Ridge Road having SBL number 078.15-1-33. The planning board classifies the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5(c)(2) of the State and Department of Quality Review Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second.
Hey, Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye. Okay, the dimension on this was 26 by 34? What's the square foot? What was it?
884.
What is it?
884.
884, so that really is, it's an accessory building. So, you have to go by chapter 225, correct, for accessory building. I'll make a motion for preliminary approval. The applicant has received the necessary variances. So, location of it has the variance, five foot from the sideline. The building isn't any higher than the house, correct? Okay, so that's all right. I don't want to go through all these because you actually got variance modifying it, so... Building to place nearer to the front property, that's got a variance for that. Actually, this really doesn't hold a whole lot of water for anything here. They're in conformance with everything else because of the variance. I'll make a motion that we grant it as presented.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Okay, and for final approval, I'll make subject as presented. And if the use is for personal use only, right? Not to be used for residential? Okay.
Nope.
And meaningful, what's that, Joe?
Not to be used for commercial?
Yeah, just personal use.
Could we also put the colors in the record?
Yeah, what was it? It was gray?
Gray and two-tone gray.
Two-tone gray.
You can use the den, two-tone gray?
The denment in there that they have, that they, from the lumberyard, has all the colors in it? It's a denment A.
Okay.
Great. Just according to that and to those sketches that are dated up.
Just in case it comes out rainbow.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. All right, and what else do we have? Nothing else had to be in there, correct? Oh, significant, I was starting, significant construction to commence by July 21st, 2021.
Second.
Who's second?
Mr. Mixel?
John.
Okay. Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Sir?
Will you get last time you said, a date of something?
What's that?
When was the last time you retired on a date of something?
Oh, no, just putting in your schedule here with all your, the colors and so on and so forth. We'll just put that into the record. This way, it's in the file. If anybody had to go look it up, there it is.
You have a year.
You have one year to get it started.
Oh, the last thing you're talking about? Oh, that's, it has to start within a year. I'm sure that's not a problem. Yeah, I didn't think so. All right, that's two down. Homestead Heights, I guess? Homestead Heights? Yeah, sure, go ahead, read it. By the time, they'll be in here.
Okay. Vest of you is tabled.
What's that?
Vest of you is tabled.
I'm sorry?
The vest of you is tabled, right?
No, that, I'm sorry, yeah, that was tabled.
That was tabled?
What kind of table?
Yeah, I just had that across there.
When's that one tabled too?
Yeah, they went to the zoning board, I guess, and they didn't have the setback from the road. What the dimensions were, it wasn't all spelled out correctly. Yeah.
You got tabled through date or the...
Well, I don't know when they come, I don't know what date, I don't know what their schedule is. They gotta go back to the ZBA and so on, so they just have to reset up, I guess.
They never...
They came in for a sketch review. But then they went to the zoning board, then the zoning board didn't act on it.
Sixty-two days in the running.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah. Then we should... Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Homestead Heights subdivision located at 492 Drum Road applicant 42-482 Joseph Circle LLC is requesting preliminary final subdivision approval to subdivide an existing 18.2 acre parcel into five lots located in a LL large lot, single-family residential district under the code of Town of Webster.
Hell, we're not going to see that anyways. I'm lucky I see the board. Is it too bright in here? Hallaroo, McPanle Row Associates. Pretty simple subdivision. The septics are good. The grading is simple, the soils are good. We got water. I don't even know what to say other than that, good drainage. I have a question for you. Is there water over there? There isn't water now, because it used to be well zone.
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
So, there's water over there now?
Yeah, old street.
Yeah? It's pretty straightforward. One, two, three, four, five, six, no issues. Anybody any concerns? They all need zoning, three acres, large lot. Yeah. Yeah, no, they're, it's a nice setup, actually. Anybody, any issues with it? Any concerns?
Nope, looks really good.
What's that, Dave?
I say it fits really well in the area.
Yeah.
About three acres, plenty of room.
All right, now, let's see. There were some people, I believe, she's at the room, in a concern.
Did you call him?
Yeah, no, that's what I was gonna do. I'll wait. All right, so we are working on the Homestead Heights subdivision. So, again, this is a preliminary approval. And if anyone wishes to comment on this, feel free to call. And the number would be 872-7011. Whoa, that was quick. There we go. One of these buttons turns it on. This one. Good evening.
Hello, yes, one of the neighbors that's living across the street on Pellet Road adjacent to this development that you're referring to. And I guess I was just, you know, we're concerned about the pond that's there and the flow, you know, with that pond across the Pellet Road and beyond. And make sure that that's addressed properly.
Okay, we'll have him address that. Did you hear that okay now?
Yeah, there's two ponds right here and we're not touching them.
They're not gonna be touched?
Same just the way they are.
Those are, he's saying they'll be the same. They'll be as they are. You still there?
Yeah, I am.
Oh, okay, yeah, they aren't gonna be touching those, he said.
And one of the neighbors too. My name's Lee Battery, I'm right across the street.
Hey, Lee, how are you?
And we're curious to keep the know, when they change and put the locks up there, build the houses, and the water flows into the west side of Pellet Road and it's under the road, we're gonna take water. We want to make sure that somebody addresses the water going under the road from the west side to the east side that will start seeping through our yards and go behind our property, behind one of us especially, into the lake. So, when they put new houses in there, we want to make sure that the town knows that there could be a water problem down the road by building house.
So, you're saying you're concerned as water going under the, is there a culvert under the road or...
Yes, there is. My parents have been there for 65 years.
Uh-huh.
And there is a small culvert that goes under the road to my neighbor's property, which is standing next to Mr. Tubiel.
We couldn't find one.
Yeah, you got a small piece of culvert underneath there.
Do you know that, Joe?
We searched for it, but we could not find it. The valve detector and the shovel, we got all the way hard and then the guy relative hot who was not finding it. That's not to say it's not there, but we could not find it.
Has this gentleman seen it?
Jay Allen Point, though, if you look at the lots, all the impervious area moved drops and some pumps are going into dry wells, right? They're going into dry wells. There's gonna be no additional water heading west or eastwards.
Okay, I don't know if you can hear that, Lee, but basically what he's saying...
I can't hear what you're saying.
The water will be going into dry wells, basically. So, and then he said they searched for the pipe, but they couldn't find a pipe. You're breaking up, Lee, Ben.
Excuse me. We're hoping for that right now, but if that doesn't happen down the road and it becomes a problem, who is gonna take care of it?
Now, that would probably fall on the highway department, I would guess.
Well, I think the other problem also is that these are outside on sewer, so you're looking at septics and leach fields and, you know, that needs to be a concern as well.
Well, okay, but you gotta understand too, those are large, pretty large lots right there. And that's sandy soil. So, they have to do a perk test. They have to get the approval from the Monroe County Health Department. So, it isn't just a given. And they may have already done your deep hole test. So, they've already done the test, the perk is good, that eliminates that issue.
Yeah, it's not the issue of it being, perk being good or not good. It's the concern that there is water always flowing into this pond and there's always water flowing out of the pond. And, you know, depending on where you put the leach fields, et cetera, or any other runoff, it's gonna end up in the pond, it's gonna end up in my yard. My dog's gonna drink out of it, and the neighbor's dog's gonna drink out, the other neighbor's gonna end up, you know... And so, we want to make sure it's addressed properly. That's a big concern. It doesn't seem like anybody was particularly aware that this water flows into my tree and into the neighbor's property, and that's why we're bringing it to your attention now.
Uh-huh.
It's very well, any time it rains, the water flow will pick up tremendously from the west side to the east side of Pellet Road.
But when you look at the total acreage on here, the amount of impervious surface is very minimal with the houses.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that at all. I'm just, my point is, whatever ends up in that pond, ends up in my yard. And so, you know, that has, like I said, it needs to be addressed. It's just not...
Control, right? Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Well, what they'll do with that, the water flowing into the pond, there's not gonna be any more water flowing off of that, out of that pond after it's developed than currently flows out of it. Because what they'll do is they'll have an outflow pipe on it, which will be reduced so that it'll hold the water back and slowly reduce it. So, no more, kind of make it simple. There shouldn't be any more water going off than there currently is. That's the way, every subdivision is designed that way. Because what you're saying right now, Lee, almost every subdivision has the same issue. You know, it's just the way it is today, but it's controlled.
Now, that you're, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Now, you're telling me that you're changing the pipe on the street? If you're telling me you're gonna put a new purging pipe from one side to the other, it must be, you're changing the pipes, you're telling me there's a pipe going through?
Now, there's no need for a pipe, I don't believe, to go through. It's the, wherever the water is flowing currently from that pond, nothing's gonna change at that point. That's the bottom line of it.
How do you know that?
Because that's what I just explained to you, Lee. The water is controlled, the outflow, it's a detention pond. What it does, it'll take water into it at X cubic feet and it'll release it at X cubic feet, which would be smaller. That's all, it's just choked down. So, the pond will fill up a little bit and then gradually recede.
Mr. Chairman, there's a drainage report too that...
What's that?
Whether there's a drainage report that we submitted.
Actually, the town does have a drainage report too.
That covers all that.
He's just saying, and it covers every bit of what you're saying.
Right.
Wait, then I, so you do realize that there is a pipe underneath the road or is that what you're telling me or...
No, I'm saying they've done a traffic, a traffic, they've done a drainage report on the whole site. So, the pipe under the road...
We don't think there's any.
They haven't found it. They've looked and haven't found it.
Okay, so, that's why I'm letting you know, it does exist. And it would be pretty easy to find if you want. I'll find it and I can help you find it pretty easy. I tied into that pipe a number of years ago. And as a matter of fact, when they did the surveying over there, they put a couple stakes on the outlet of that pipe on my property. So, it evidently was brought to the surveyor's attention as well. well.
Okay, why don't we do this, Lee, wait a minute, hold on, why don't we do this? Why don't we set up a meeting with yourself and Joe Herbst, who is the highway superintendent, and he knows where every drop of rainwater runs?
Okay.
Supposedly. Okay, you can set a meeting up with him?
Yeah.
All right, you wanna, you wanna give him a call tomorrow?
Yeah, actually, no problem, I can contact you.
Okay, good, then that would be, that'd be the best resolution, that, you'd probably put your mind at ease with that, too.
Well, the thing, the concern I have, and just again, like I said, whether you guys realize there's a pipe or not underneath the road, the point is, everything that goes into that pond is gonna come out of the pond onto my property. So when it's just nature and wild for the last, you know, thousand years, it's, it's, you know, nothing but nature, now that there's housing there, I'm not opposed to it, I just wanna make sure that we realize that that runoff is gonna go into my yard and into the neighbor's yard.
Okay, why don't we do that? Why don't you set up with Joe tomorrow, and, um, he'll meet you at site, and you guys can resolve that part of it, he can show you exactly where the water's going. Alls we do, this board deals with it, but we don't know where every little pipe is, that's up to the, you know, the highway department, engineering, and so forth, so I would, I would get ahold of Joe tomorrow and set it up. Wanna do that?
Yeah, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, again, the point, the important part here is that everything that goes into the pond needs to be, uh, natural, it can't be anything that, that shouldn't be in there, let's put that...
No, I'm sure it won't be, I'm sure it won't be.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that that's, that's the most, you know, something, something, uh, more definitive than that, I, I, yeah, well, that's an important, it's an important piece, if it was flown in a year or year, that's, it's an important piece.
Mm-hmm.
It's very important, and it's one of the neighbors that are worried about the house.
Okay, I, you know, let's, let's do this, let's set it up tomorrow with Joe, meet with him, and I'm sure you can resolve that thing. What you're saying, I can understand what you're saying, I don't know what water could possibly contaminated, what contaminated water could possibly go into that pond, with the acreage that's here with six houses on here, um, this is about as clean as you could ever get a site. Let's do that, let's, let's, we can keep going with this, let's, uh, contact Joe tomorrow, and let's see if we can get this thing resolved, okay?
Hey, we're not, we're not against the houses, we're just wanna make sure it's done right.
Yep, understood, understood.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, guys, we'll talk to you later, take care, Lee.
I guess one thing is, close the loop on what the guy is asking.
What's that?
Just to really finalize on what they're asking about, their concern actually is the proximity of the septic fields to the pond, and making sure that the septic fields themselves don't wind up leaching into the pond, so the question is, what's incorporated in the design of a septic field that prevents it from leaching into the pond?
The, uh...
Particularly on two D, I think is the closest one.
Two D is, is a long way away.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
Two D is the closest one.
And two D is close, but it looks like they had great perks, because it's a small system, and I don't have the details here. And I believe it was in the four, the seven minute range, so that everything is gonna go down, it's not, nothing's gonna be flowing horizontally through that, and so they're in the ground systems, there's no minerals, no water, no rock, uh, everything's gonna filter down through, not, not go laterally, so by the time anything comes out of there water-wise, if they're, if it does, it's already been purified, cleaned.
About how far is the closest leach line to the pond?
Uh, this one is, uh, this one that's out the pond is, uh, twenty feet.
So you got twenty foot natural barrier between the leach field and the pond?
Which is what you'd have on a house anyways.
Yeah, yeah, twenty feet away from the house, yeah.
What's that?
Sure.
Yeah, you gotta, 'cause we, otherwise it doesn't pick you up, Joe.
Please state your name.
Joseph Herbst. For all the, don't know me, I grew up on that property, all my nine siblings grew up on that property, it is pure sand, like Barry and I were talking, the health department has got parameters X number of feet away from natural features, steep slopes, all that stuff, where the septic, the per, the deep holes and the perks tested, uh, and met county health requirements, are gonna be away from that pond, they're not gonna, there's no way that that, any affluent from the leach fields or the septic system are gonna make that pond. I, I grew up, it is pure sand, I've already worked on some of that property, and it is pure sand, you're gonna have leaching vertical far greater than you could ever possibly have it horizontal. I was there last Saturday with the four inches of rain, there was no accumulation anywhere, including in that pond, I was there, on the property, that's what, you know, I mean, that's my stomping grounds, that's where I grew up.
Good, thanks, Joe.
That's right, I think that really addresses the comment that they were having, you know, making sure the leach, leach aid doesn't get into the pond.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right, anybody, I left this out and no one has called, so does anyone else have any issues or concerns, or Mark? Anything? Dave? Nothing?
Nope.
Okay, pretty simple operation going here, um, wanna do a secret audit?
Yep, there's a motion for an unlisted action. Town of Webster Planning Board consider request by applicant four eighty-two Joseph Circle LLC to subdivide an existing eighteen point two acre parcel having SPL number zero six four point zero one dash one dash five into five lots located at four ninety-two Drum Road in a large lot, single family residential district. The planning board determined that the proposed action is an unlisted action under Part six seventeen of State Environmental Quality Review Regulations. The planning board determined that the action is subject to a single agency review pursuant to Part six seventeen point six B one of SEAKER, and that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself as lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration to the criteria for determining significance as set forth in Section six seventeen point seven C one of SEAKER, and has one, considered the information contained in the short environmental assessment form, Part one, dated April twenty-first, twenty twenty, number two, considered public comments directed to the planning board during the public hearing on July twenty-first, twenty twenty, and number three, completed Part three of the environmental assessment form, or Part two of the environmental assessment form. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action is not a significant, or will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to make all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharge the Town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility as lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information analysis above, the referenced supporting documentation and discussions of the action by the Town of Webster Planning Board, as documented by the minutes for this meeting, that the proposed action will not result in a significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the above reasons, issues a negative declaration is evidence of this determination.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Pretty, pretty cut and drag project here, um, three acre lots, we did get a correspondence from the Conservation Board, and basically what they're saying is to keep as many of the mature trees as possible on the site, that's all. We talked about seeing some turkeys and game trails going through there, and all sorts of things, yeah. Okay, anybody wanna make a motion to this, preliminary?
I'll make a motion that we grant preliminary approval to the Homestead Heights subdivision located at four ninety-two Drum Road. Subject to PRC comments, subject to a letter of credit posted with the Town of Webster, subject to Conservation Board comments, subject to Monroe County Water Authority comments. Address any recent subdivision approvals of adjacent lands. All improvements shall be constructed according to the specification of the Town of Webster. All site work will be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster. Preserve all mature trees on the site where possible. Comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency. Address drainage. Approvals are subject to drawing number... Let's see what we use in there. Twelve ten oh one?
Yep.
Yeah, twelve, twelve ten dash oh one.
Is that your motion?
It's the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Okay, final?
Before you guys make a decision about final, do you wanna consider having Mr. Herbst meet with this gentleman, come back and report to us, to the board, and then move on to the final at that point, after you've heard the information?
I think based on the information that we got, Raj, uh, and what Joe is saying, the sand, the sandy soil and everything, and the engineers supported that back then, he's got the report on that, I can't even imagine it being close to being an issue. I think what he needs to be is just satisfied by meeting with Joe to corroborate what we've said. Yeah. Wouldn't be anything to hold it up for. Yeah, I don't, no need to come back, I'd just soon, just move it with final approval. Okay. Wanna do a final audit, Dave?
Yep, I make a motion for final approval, Homestead Heights subdivision, four ninety-two Drum Road, subject to PRC comments, subject to parks and rep fees, subject, subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable government fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant constructions shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on seven twenty-one, twenty, twenty twenty-one. Conditions of preliminary final approval are depicted on the cover page of the final design plans. Engineer for the proposed project shall provide a letter of certification that all proposed work was completed as per planning board resolution of final approval before a certificate of occupancy will be issued. We're gonna need a letter of credit?
Um, I don't know, Josh, do you need a letter of credit for, just for the property, for me?
No.
There's no right of way or road work, I don't believe we would require it for...
You make it subject to all engineering approvals.
Yeah, subject to all engineering approvals. Downspots are gonna be, oh, connected out.
Okay, hey. They go to dry wells.
They're going into a dry well?
Correct.
All downspots will be connected to dry wells. Uh, subject to resolution of final approved minutes, approvals are subject to drawing number twelve ten dash oh one, dated April twenty twenty.
Okay, a second.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye. Okay, that's good for site plan approval for the project, but we really should do a subdivision approval for the overall, I'll make a motion that we, we determine this and grant a subdivision approval for this designated parcel, same one, number, whatever it is.
Second.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Just as a postscript, that lot, two D, the, just as a postscript, that lot, two D, the longest perk was nine minutes.
Really?
Yeah, nine minutes, pretty quick.
Yeah. That whole area is just nothing but sand all around. All right, you're all set.
Hey, Joe, Joe, you still there after Soto?
Yeah.
I just see it, she made you work.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Oh, this is...
Take care, Al. Yes, Keith, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, that's the bird one, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll skip it and go to the next one. Bellaterra then, sure, that's an easy one, there's, um, I, I asked Josh not to have them bringing drawings and presenting all that paperwork and stuff, it's nothing but an update of what they currently have, that's all, they can put the thing on the wall, just show what they're doing, and we'll just go with that. Good evening.
Tony, do you want me to read it?
Sure, go ahead.
Bellaterra subdivision, section one, extension of approvals located corner of Salt and Schlegel Road, applicant Mike Ritchie of Costas Engineering, who's requesting a one-year extension of final site plan and subdivision approvals to construct thirty-five two-unit townhouses, buildings on a thirty-seven point two acre lot located in LMR, low medium residential district, under the code of Town of Webster.
Good evening, Mike Ritchie, Costas Engineering, um, so this, this project was approved by the planning board last April, um, we worked with the town and other agencies, Water Authority, Health Department, DOT, Army Corps, obtained all those approvals, uh, say, September, October of last year, and conferred with our client, weather was starting to turn, he decided at that time, didn't wanna start a lot of big earthwork operations with the rainy season started, so he decided, let's hold off till the spring, you know, then unfortunately we all know what happened this spring with, with COVID, so it really forced him to hit the brakes, um, and thankfully, we were able to communicate with Josh Artuso at the town, and we were able to work with him and get the opportunity to come before you to request the extension, uh, to give Mr. Thomas the opportunity to hopefully start this fall, um, if not, you know, first part of next spring, because it is such a big project, you can't really take it lightly and just, just go and see what happens, so, uh, he's fully committed to this project, nothing has changed, the plans have been signed off by all other agencies, and, you know, if we can get this extension, then we'll move forward and, and schedule a pre-con meeting, and then schedule a map, and, you know, follow the next steps of development. I can answer any questions you have.
I think that, you said it all, that's it, there's nothing changed, that, that was the main thing, and it's still going through, so that's fine. Anybody wanna make a motion for an extension for one year?
I'll make a motion.
What do we use for the date now, this one, last year was April sixteenth, is that we still use, that date would expire April sixteenth?
It would be, it should be the same, a year from that date, yeah.
I'll make a motion that, I'll make a motion to extend the Bellaterra, Bellaterra subdivision, section one, uh, located at the corner of Salt and Schlegel Roads, uh, for one year, ending on significant construction will end on April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, second? Second?
Okay. Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Thanks a lot.
That intersection is bad news, Schlegel and Salt.
You've heard me complain about that intersection, that thing needs six, a four-way?
That needs a four-way stop or something.
Without a question.
Wasn't someone, Jeff was gonna talk to the county?
If you drive over to Basket Road, which has minimal traffic...
Right. It's got a four-way stop.
There's a four-way, you know, traffic stop sign, and Salt Road, which is significantly more traffic.
Can we send a letter or something about that to the county to...
Well, brought that up, the projects that have been in, it's gotta go through the county.
Jeff was gonna send a list, he was gonna send a letter, maybe, maybe Josh could.
Yeah, right now Josh has got more stuff to deal with.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, something should definitely be done, that, Salt Road is a busy street.
From when the golf course, and then when Bellaterra came in, I beat it to death in there.
There's definitely like visibility problems there, where cars will disappear as you're waiting on Schlegel to turn south onto...
The applicant is not here? Okay, then we'll table the project to...
This is just an accident waiting to happen.
When's the next meeting? This is the twenty-first?
Probably August first.
August fourth, August fourth the next meeting?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we table the twenty-one thirty-eight Empire Boulevard, uh, proposal to August fourth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good. Anything else, anyone? Nothing?
Nope.
Okay, with that, I guess we're done, thanks for coming in.